All right, good evening. We'll get started here. Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of January 14th, 2016. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is a call out with provisions stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Keith, would you take role, please?
Sure. Larry Fox.
Here.
Jeff Newsom.
Here.
Sue Grissom.
Here.
Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Tom Murphy.
Here.
Joe Colleen.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, Item 4, Approval of Our Meeting Agenda.
So moved.
Here we have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell, a second from Commissioner Grissom. Are there any changes? All those in favor say aye. Aye, posnay, motion carries. Next up, Approval of Our Meeting Minutes.
Support.
Okay, Approval of Our Meeting Minutes for December 3rd, 2015, from Commissioner Newsom, second from Commissioner Voight. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posnay, motion carries. Next up, Item 6, Call to the Public. Anyone have anything they wish to say? Come up forward. If we could get your name, please.
I'm Barbara Krieger. I'm a member of -- I live in Heartland, and I'm a member of the Board of the Livingston Land Conservancy, and I would like to announce that there's going to be a meeting at Heartland Insurance, a public meeting, on Thursday, January 21st, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. The public is invited. There are two properties within Heartland Township that are under the purvey of the Land Conservancy, and there may be other people who would be interested in talking to the Conservancy about possibly putting their land, saving their land. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, we'll close. Item 6, Call to the Public. We have no public hearing this evening, so next up on our agenda is Item 8, and the first item is Site Plan Application Number 534A. This is for the Turnin' Two Softball Complex. So, the applicant would like to come up, grab a seat. We'll start out, and we'll have our interim planning director, Kim Scherschlik, give us a brief overview, and then we'll turn it over to the applicant for anything he'd like to add. Kim?
Good evening. The application before you, as indicated, is Site Plan Application Number 534A. This is the First Amendment to the Turnin' Two Complex. The applicant, Blackwing LLC, is requesting an amendment to the approved Turnin' Two Softball Site Plan to convert two of the used softball fields to dual-purpose fields, which would allow for boys' baseball as well as softball. Complex consists of four, non-illuminated outdoor fields, accessory facilities, a concession area, a 64,000-square-foot indoor training facility, along with an access drive and approximately a 250-space parking lot. Complex is located at the southwest corner of US 23 Service Road and Clyde Road on a parcel totaling approximately 95 acres. And in accordance with the zoning ordinance, the initial application was approved as a private recreation area, which is a special land use in the C.A. Conservation Agriculture Zoning District. This application only proposes to modify the site plan element, specifically the reconfiguration of the two southern fields, and doesn't impact the special land use component. Approval of an amendment allowing for expansion of the two southern fields would allow for boys' baseball, and the facility would continue to cater to youth, both boys and girls, and upon approval, both softball and baseball. The result of the -- as a result of the expansion, the septic system will also be relocated, and the detention pond will be expanded and reconfigured slightly as well. Retaining wall that you will see on the plan, and that's associated with the southwest field. So, no changes to any of the anticipated programming is proposed. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions stated in the staff report, and please note that the Fire Marshal's review letter has been received and has been conveyed to you this evening as well.
Great. Well, I guess we'll turn the floor over to you if you'd like to introduce yourself. Anything else you'd like to add?
I'm Kevin Johnson, Rhodes &amp; Johnson, 101 North L.A., Fenton, Michigan, 48430. And we're here to request the change in the site plan for the outdoor fields. I think when we've been through this multiple times, we've talked about all the different variations of the fields, and we, at one time, even had boys' baseball on there as a fifth field. But the overwhelming, I guess, groundswell, great response of community has been fabulous, and we've been very appreciative. And so, the boys, all the boys leagues can we come play too? And so, we met with the field consultants, and they thought the least impactful would be to just take and make dual-purpose fields, so that you, you know, you have girls' mound, and you take it off, and you change it for the boys' mound. So, just two of the fields, instead of adding a fifth field, just make two dual-purpose. And so, the shapes are slightly different between boys' baseball. I'm not a boys' baseball expert, but they're slightly smaller than men's fields and larger than girls' softball. So, the change is farther to the south. We didn't change the building location, the parking area, or anything else, just expanded those two to the south, and they just have to create a bigger angle. So, that's why we're here tonight. We did the health department, actually, the septic health department came out and did their perk test, and they actually requested the location that you see is actually per the health department, not because of something we wanted to do. So, we took their recommendation to put in that location, and the rest is all the same. Landscaping and everything else is the same. No change.
All right, great. Yeah, we don't -- we have just a few points to touch on here, make sure everybody is familiar with what they're proposing. So, if we take a look at the planning department's letter dated January 2nd, over on, it's labeled Page 4, or packet Page 7. Just that the disturbance area is now 29 acres instead of 24 acres, obviously, if we're expanding the fields out. Any comments on that? Makes sense? Detention area and the landscaping over on Page 5. I guess staff is just looking for a confirmation from the planning commission that we're comfortable with the reconfiguration of the detention basin and any of the landscaping that's proposed. So, Kim, could you blow that piece up just a little bit? Does anybody have any questions or comments on it? If you recall, we tried to get it as -- asked them to make it as natural as they possibly could, given the environment that they were in. Mm-hmm. Do you remember what it looked like?
Yes.
It's fine with you guys?
Fine.
Okay. You're all -- apparently, staff's also asking of us for -- to take a look at the screening against the residential districts, which would be the northwest side of the site, and make sure that we're comfortable with the change. That was due to the septic field moving?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, would you do move the septic field northward?
Yeah. We did two or three test fours, and they asked us to move it up, whatever the 30 feet was.
Can you pull that back so we can see the home?
And we, if you remember, we still haven't placed, we have like eight or whatever random trees we promised to place up there.
Yeah.
And again, those could be placed further than that. They just were spot planted in that area, so if we want to clump them around closer to that, then we're good with that, too. We're just...
Yeah, the additional ones are the trees that the large log pad is in the sun.
Yeah, you can see them, yeah.
Comfortable with -- comfortable with that? Okay. Staff's awful -- also asking us to just take a quick look at the general landscaping. Considering that there's a significant buffer to the southwest due to the regulated wetlands, and that it is overall intention of the property to remain natural, staff is recommending that, even though they're moving further to the south, that we not require any additional landscaping. And could you just pull that back? Kim, with the wall? Because that's the next item up.
Well, we're talking about general landscaping. You're still adding trees along the north side of the property, right, parallel with Clyde Road?
Yeah. We didn't change any of the plan, basically, from the parking lot up. It's all been the same.
When you enlarged the fields to the south there, is that closer to the retention pond now?
Yeah, the actual retention pond was -- we had to move it off to the side just a little bit. It used to be directly below that, that's right.
I think it curves around now. More kidney shape.
Yes, it's kidney shaped. Before, it was just kind of more of a...
There is a small area directly...
It's a forbey.
Forbey.
It is, it's a forbey, just to collect it from that center section.
Okay.
So, this is now the wall?
Yep.
And all that staff is asking us to do is note that this is further, they're further south, and because of the elevation changes, we need a retaining wall to maintain the height of the field.
That's right, that's it.
It's going to be made out of what?
And what is the retaining wall?
Like the nice split face, the landscaping block, you know, like the split face block? Like you see at the end of the retaining, nice landscaping. Because we have other, that same retaining block up in the planers, if you remember, we had those little stacked planers.
Right. Same material. Everyone comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then the next page was the wall and the fence. We kind of, we sort of hit the wall there. And I guess staff is asking, when you do get to the middle on this, with the change that you show the proposed retaining wall and the materials on the plan?
That's great, no problem.
Really, there aren't any other things to discuss. The DPW department is fine with the change. Township engineer, subject to the items addressed, being addressed, there are no objections to the approval. And, Kim, you said the fire marshal has approved it?
Yes, and a letter has been placed before you, and the fire marshal is here for any questions as well.
Are there any questions for them? Any comments from anyone?
I have a couple more.
Sure.
Is your scheduling going to stay the same? Are you adding weekends? Are you adding longer weekends?
It's just the same. It's really, because it'll either be boys or girls. I mean, they don't play...
So, how are you satisfying both customers in the same...
It just, whenever the girls, you know, if the girls play, they just don't play that often, and the same with the boys. So, there's, it's not a, it's an either-or. You'll either have the mound set up for girls, or you'll have...
That was my next question. How do you accommodate the different mounds?
Well, because it's turf, they make the, you could take out the home plate, or you could take out the mound, and then make a different one.
And are you...
I don't know whether you'll grow it down or... The answer is, you know, the turf companies make these, and so, that was one of our questions. Do you make the, the girls have dirt infield, and the boys have the grass with the dirt around it? And so, it'll be probably like designed, design-wise like the girls, but then they'll make the dimensions like the boys. So, I know, it's got a, you know, it'd be easier to have one of each, but this is a good...
How are you delineating the home runs for the girls on the larger fields?
They have temporary fences. You bring in the...
Okay.
I think they did that at Comerica Park when they first opened it. They had that one fence in the outfield, and then they eventually moved it, so, yeah. You'll have to take it down and set it up for each.
We'll just have to come and see.
You're right. Me, too.
So, what is your plan on storage of all this equipment you'll be taking down and setting up?
So, there's a little storage area, so for the fencing, the fencing would stay up, except you'd have to take that fencing down, and I'm sure it'll, can lever, you know, in the outfield, you won't haul any fencing anywhere. And then we have two storage places, one in the little clubhouse or the little bathroom area for small stuff. And then, if you remember, we had the access road on the north side of the main building, there's a big storage area for all the, any equipment that we'd have. So, the hole, there's a garage door, like, you know, in a driveway back for the fire department, in the back, so.
Is each group the same for the boys as well?
Just, yep, just youth.
Any further questions?
I have just one comment. So, the last time we met, we talked about screening the parking lot, which I see you've done with large shrubs, and it's way beyond that we even require. But what we do require is what we use is something evergreen.
Okay.
So, if you guys could just look at what you have and just switch it to something evergreen?
Sure.
But, yeah, you went way beyond in size and all that. It's just that here in Michigan, only half the year we have leaves.
Yep. Guy.
That's my only comment.
Is that Justin? We brought the landscape guy, so that's good.
Okay, landscape guy.
Okay, anything else? Now, you'll notice on Page 7, the recommendation, as Kim had stated, was approval with a few conditions. At the bottom of Page 7, there's a motion, if you're so inclined.
I move to approve Site Plan Amendment Application Number 534A for the First Amendment to Turn Two Complex located at southwest corner of US 23 Service Drive and Clyde Road, subject to the following condition. Elevations and materials proposed for the retaining wall are shown on the plan. Applicant complies with the requirements of the DPW Director, Township Engineer, and Fire Marshal as outlined in the representative letters, respectful of the letters, I'm sorry. And that should take care of it.
Just the screening.
The screening.
Oh, the screening and the adjustment we mentioned tonight at the parking lot.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Voight, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Is there any further discussion tonight? All those in favor say aye. Aye, posnay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks.
We have the high school kids here. Should we apply for a gas station or anything?
No.
Make it more interesting for them.
Yeah. Little, little shorter tonight.
Yeah.
Next up would be the second item under Agenda Item 8, and that would be Site Plan Number 536. This is the Chromein District Library Reconfiguration. If you'd like to have a seat, we'll turn it over to our, I guess, interim planning director. Is that your official title?
That's the official for at least another week.
All right. And then we'll turn it over to the applicant. So, Kim, the floor is yours.
Okay. I'm just bringing up the site here, as an idea while I'm describing this. And the application before you this evening is the Chromein District Library Reconfiguration Site Plan Amendment Number 536. The applicant, the Chromein Library District, is requesting approval of construction of a two-story, 3,870-square-foot addition to the east end of the existing library, along with related mechanical upgrades, tools, improvements to site drainage, pedestrian circulation, and landscaping. Chromein Library is located on North Heartland Road in the Village of Heartland, and it's situated on two parcels, and these parcels are 1.2 and 0.89 acres in size, for a total of about 2.10 acres. The library is located in the STR, the Settlement Residential District, which allows for public buildings, including libraries. Purpose of the proposed addition is to allow for expanded staff space on the first floor, and dedicated youth program rooms and associated staff space on the second floor. The provision of different services is not anticipated. This addition is simply to provide more space for the existing services. Staff recommends approval with the conditions listed in the staff report, and please note that the Fire Marshal's review letter has been received and conveyed to you, and he is here this evening to speak to the application.
All right. If you could introduce yourself, it's your turn.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dan Whistler with Daniels &amp; Zermatt Architects, 2080 South State Street, Ann Arbor. We are the architects for the project. Joining me this evening is Cece Marlowe, the library director, and we have four of the library trustees joining us tonight. We have Kate DeRose, Paul Black, Don Thompson, and Kathleen Omski. Also, we have Scott Wren, who is the library's facility supervisor, and we have Dick Kruger, who is on the library's Building Planning Committee, who has joined us as well. Our, our plan tonight is primarily to give you the briefest of explanations, I think, on the project, but really, to answer any questions that she may have. And if you have questions about library operations, I may defer those to Cece or one of her board members to maybe answer those as best we can. The, the project that we're proposing is a relatively modest project. As you may be aware, the, the library has put forth a couple of larger proposed expansions and renovations to the Village Library, and those did not meet with community support. But the library consists, and the Village consists of really two buildings. One was the original building built in 1927, and the, the addition that was done in 1980. So, they are working out of a building that has essentially 35-year-old, you know, mechanical systems and infrastructure. And so, going forward, the library needs to be able to, you know, fully operate that library and maintain it so it can last for another 50 or 100 years. So, so part of what we're doing in this project is addressing some of those infrastructure needs, the mechanical system replacement. And the library has done a few things over the years, most recently, replacing the elevator, replacing the boiler, and so, they've been doing some of these things. But part of what they've been doing is with the anticipation of a much larger project down the road, they delayed some of those things, and now that sort of the community has spoken, it's time to address some of those items. So, re-roofing and, and those sort of more, less glamorous building facility upgrades are being done as part of this project. So, it's a reconfiguration project in addition, and so, we're looking at adding a modest amount of space onto the building that will really allow us to reconfigure interior space. So, over time, since 1980, when the addition was done, and that significantly expanded the library, services have changed. We now have computers. We have a lot of things that are different in how the library operates. And over time, a lot of public space that was planned in the building in 1980 had gone over to staff and support space. So, part of the reconfiguration, the additional space, will allow us to reconfigure some of that staff space and return what was formerly public space back to, back to the public. So, with that, as, as Kim had mentioned, we are adding on a small addition on the east side of the building. The library has three separate parking lots, and we are not planning on making any major changes to the existing parking, but we are reconfiguring, or we are creating a new dumpster enclosure, enclosure near the proposed staff entry, which is intended to certainly improve the existing waste receptacle condition, as it's currently just sitting in the parking lot and not screened. We are doing some drainage off of the south side of the addition. We are dealing with sort of a modest little tiered detention area that's really going to be a series of three rain gardens to address the increase in impervious area through the addition by picking up some of the existing roof drainage and, and all of that. So, that is contemplated on the east side of the building. And then, as I said, we're not really looking at making major changes to parking areas. They're sort of, they're existing now, and they'll continue to exist as we go forward. As we look at the adjacencies, part of trying to fit this fairly modest addition into the library's configuration of their property, we are, and we're building into sort of the hillside that's there now, and so, we are looking to regrade that for the new addition and also for rerouting the existing stormwater around the addition. And the schools are being favorable and cooperative in allowing the library to do a little modest regrading onto, onto their property so, so we can make that work as cost-effective as possible. So, that is what's proposed with the site. I'm happy to answer questions as we go forward. If you want to interrupt me, by all means, do so, or you can hold your questions to the end. But if we can roll onto the floor plan, I'll just kind of briefly run through that. So, in the, in the, oops, in the proposed addition, we are looking on the first floor, basically creating staff space on that main floor, and that's going to allow, that's going to free up space within the existing building. We're looking at downsizing the circulation desk to create some new group study, or small one-to-two-person study spaces. But much of the main library that you see, this doesn't really want to work, much of the main library that is, as you see today, is not going to be changed. This is a modest project. We have a limited budget, so a lot of what is there today is, so is what you see is what you, what you get. Thank you so much. And so, what we see as the main portion of the library, the existing entrance, that's essentially going to remain. We'd like to do more, but we're working within the, literally, we're working within the money that the library has set aside over the years for, for building maintenance issues. And so, that is the extent of our, our proposed addition. Can we go to the next plan? And then, on the second floor, we are creating some additional staff support space, and that's allowing us to move out of existing staff-occupied spaces. That will create group study rooms for patrons that are currently there. And we're creating a new, small story room for programming. The library does a lot of programming. It's one of the things the library truly excels at, that's really appreciated by the community. And that's one of the highest priorities of items that, that the library has heard from the patrons in terms of surveys. The other thing on the second floor is we're freeing up what is currently staff space down here, moving them into the first floor of the addition, and that's going to allow us to turn that space over to a small teen area. And that is the, probably the second highest priority the library has had, is trying to create some separation between teens and the grade school and younger children, who currently all occupy the second floor, and that creates some conflicts from time to time. So, that is the, that, in sort of in a nutshell, that's the, the scope of the project. Like I said, we'd like to be able to do more, but, but there, this is a rather surgical renovation for those interior spaces where we're going to kind of draw a hard line and say, within the areas that we're reconfiguring, we're going to make some improvements, but everything you see out there is going to have to wait for another day. So, that's the scope of the project. If we want to roll onto the next plans, replan, I guess we could skip that one. The elevations, the, the intent of expanding the building on the north side of the, on the north side of the 1980 building is essentially we're, we're continuing the design vocabulary that's there now. This is the division where the building ends currently, and so, we're continuing it for the first 20 or so feet, sort of replicating the design vocabulary of the window openings and, and the patterning. And then, where the building plan steps back for the, for the story room, we're kind of designing it so it looks a little bit like a, a three-season porch, in, in effect, with a, with wraparound windows on three, on three sides coming around here, and on the upper portion on the, on what would be the south side. Materials are intended to match the existing, so in terms of the brick, the limestone, the white painted wood trim. The library has already, as a separate project, re-roofed the existing 1980 building with a new shingle, and so, we'll be matching that for where the roof extends. And we'll be replacing the windows as a separate project, and of course, the new windows in the addition will match what gets put into the 1980 building as well. We have some brick samples that we brought, happy to share with you. I think, is that on there? Can we have those images as well?
Yes.
Can we make that bigger? The, trying to match brick from 1980 is always a challenge, but what we provided, we have two samples, and both of these bricks are basically the same price, so it's not a matter of price, but the, the 1980 building has a fair amount of texture and a little bit of range. And so, this is the moderate mat, which is, now I'm forgetting, that's option A, option B, and this is option A, and you can kind of see them in these photos that are part of your packet. We felt option, the brick option B, which is this one, in our opinion, was the closest match. This brick is actually discontinued, but Brick Rep tells us that he thinks, they think there's enough in the yard that left, left over that we could actually do the project. So, we're hoping to be able to use this brick, but this is the next closest one that's not far off. If you look at the, these windows, it just doesn't have as many darts in it, so it's not quite as going to match. But we think those are the two most likely options for us to be able to have a fairly seamless match between old and new as we go forward on, on the building. Windows will be clad in wood, wood aluminum windows. Glass will be high-performing glass, but, but basically clear, not tinted. Glass will be high-performing glass, but basically clear, not tinted, and sort of all the other items that we left in our application. With that, we had a small little rendering, I think that gives you a little feel for the materials, but more or less interesting color. There's the two brick. But it just gives you a sense of, we're really kind of continuing what's there, and that's the intent. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I think what we're going to do, so we don't miss anything, we're going to grab the Planning Department's letter of January 7th, which you probably have a copy of.
I do have it in front of me.
You hit a lot of the points, so some of this is, some of this is going to look pretty glossed over from the audience's point of view, but you have covered a lot of it. But if we start on the Planning Department's letter dated January 7th on page three, first items up are the dimensional requirements. And just for the benefit of everybody knowing that we are looking at all this, I'll just read them real quick. Lot size, you're meeting all the requirements. You're meeting all the frontage requirements. Your building setbacks are meeting the requirements. Your building height is meeting the requirements. You have a dumpster enclosure now, which you're noting is of similar materials, the brick and the CMU split base. So that is meeting the requirements. Your off-street parking is meeting the requirements. Barrier-free parking, there are no changes, so you're meeting. The loading spaces, there are no changes proposed. Landscaping and screening, there are no changes proposed in this section. Foundation planning is the first item that we just need to talk about.
Correct.
Kim, do you want to just touch on that real lightly, the foundation planting comments?
Yes, the foundation, due to the configuration of the addition, the only area that truly is exposed is the north foundation area, and that there are sweet spire and hosta proposed for that area. But it is suggested that this be determined sufficient, since that's the only view that the public would really be able to see. And there has been significant landscaping added to buffer the new utility area. So that seems to be a reasonable trade-off in this situation.
Okay. Are you guys comfortable with that? Yeah?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I think amply landscaping as well compared to what there's today, but it's going to be a bit in the shade, the north side and the east, and some of the materials, I just want whoever laid it out to look, because some of them want more sun.
Okay.
So I don't want you to invest this money and then they're looking for sun.
Parking lot landscaping, no changes, so there's no requirements. Perimeter landscaping, no changes. Detention pond and landscaping, I guess this is where we're just going to talk real briefly about the rain gardens and the landscaping around that, so.
Yes, the rain.
I'm sorry, could you pull that up on the screen?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Bring up the grading.
There you go, that's landscape.
Okay, as we were discussing previously, the rain gardens are very shallow and very minor in nature. They have very gentle slopes, and so the landscaping serves to just enhance that whole site. There really isn't a screening, which is what we typically look for there. And there are some, more or less, some scrubby evergreens there that have actually caused some maintenance problems for the library that will be removed, and then this new landscaping proposed for those areas. And the screening is, I think, what is so significant out there.
You referring to this?
Yeah.
Really, the, the, the planning there will be on the sort of west side of the new proposed sidewalk. So we're extending a sidewalk from existing here to the existing exit door in the library. And then our landscape architect has developed a rather nice screening approach with new materials to screen this courtyard, which is a little bit more of a mechanical or utility courtyard with the mechanical equipment and what's happening in there. So there's a chain link fence that now secures that courtyard from public access, and so those materials are going to kind of help dress up that area and hide that chain link fence.
So are there any questions on the, we'll call it detention rain garden landscaping?
Okay.
Next up is item F. We got screen from residential, there's no changes. General site landscaping, this is just another place where staff is looking for us to acknowledge what's being done and agree with it. Kim, could you point that out to us?
Yes, yes, there is a requirement to provide 25% overall. The site is generally landscaped quite well, and there's a wetland area surrounding it, which also provides nice views out to the exterior. And it seems that what is existing now is certainly sufficient.
Any comments on that? Okay. I guess we're asking that you add a general note on your landscape plans, that the landscape materials must comply with the applicable provisions and the zoning ordinance?
And we'll do that.
Okay. And then your identification of mulch.
Correct.
Yep. Sidewalks and pathways. Kim, could you help us out here? You're looking for a determination on that?
Yes, there is one area, and it is right in this, I guess, I think you can see the pointer here, right in this area where a new sidewalk is being proposed. This is the staff entrance, the new staff entrance. There's a sidewalk proposed, and this right now is not currently landscaped, and it's just a solid. And one of the questions that is being proposed to the planning commission is whether or not a sidewalk should be installed in that particular area. I have handed out some photographs, and I'll just kind of show them real quickly, and then I'll try to pull these out as well. But Dan has provided some photos of the area in question, and the planning commission all have copies of these photos. So what is, the determination that's being asked is whether or not there should be a requirement to extend that sidewalk.
And if I can just add to that, what we have, what that would give us would be a sidewalk along the edge of the parking lot. So we have about five or maybe six parking spaces that would then be able to utilize that sidewalk as they were to come to the front door of the library. We do have a few things that are, you know, site-related that are, that we need to deal with. There is, we're not showing it, there's existing foundation plantings that run along below the windows of the existing library. And we do have existing, some site lighting. There's a main light pole in the middle of the parking lot, and there are three more pedestrian-scaled light poles that are maybe 10 to 12 feet high, kind of a coach-style lamp. There is one right there, and there's another one right there, so they flank that existing sidewalk coming into the building, and there's a third one as you go closer to Heartland Road. And there's an existing concrete pad here, which currently holds the bicycle hoops. And sitting on that concrete pad right there adjacent to how we come into the library is the library's outdoor book return. So those elements are existing, and I guess are elements that would be in the way of us working out an extension of that sidewalk along there. Not to say it couldn't be done, but right now we'd have to find a, well, we wouldn't, really wouldn't want to bring people down and have them walk into a light pole that's in the way. And it's really not wide enough between the light pole and the book return currently to make it a barrier-free, accessible sidewalk. So something would have to change there, and it probably means either moving the book return closer to the building and removing some landscaping to do that, or looking at reconfiguring where the light poles are. That gets into some significant costs for what's currently working fairly well. We didn't show that sidewalk along here primarily because the sidewalk that we're adding for the library is intended to serve as the staff entrance and the delivery entrance. And frankly, we don't necessarily want to encourage patrons to think that they can come into this new door that's fronting off the parking lot. So that separation was, in some ways, was a helpful sort of visual cue that that's not where you're supposed to be going. You're still supposed to be coming in to the main library entrance here. So there were some sort of design benefits by not putting in, and we only essentially benefit the four or five or six parking spaces that are there in terms of giving them a way to walk into the building that they haven't been doing so for the last 35 years. So we didn't see it as essential, but like I said, if it's important to the planning commission, we'll find a way to incorporate that, but I know we're going to have to make some changes to accommodate that.
I just got a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you get use out of the bike hoops there?
I think they do, yeah.
We have at least one patron who rides his bike to the library twice a day. So yes, but there are others, there are families who also bike.
Right, right. Yeah, I wouldn't recommend, and I agree with the separation comment too. I think you're kind of looking for that stuff, and I mean, and I don't think it's necessary.
Just more impervious surface too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you. I need to put an additional sidewalk through.
Okay.
I have a comment on the sidewalk, though, that you are adding for access through that, you know, the door. If I'm not mistaken, someone would be able to park right in front of that sidewalk, right? There's a parking space there, so it'd be hard to access the sidewalk.
Well, we have, we have a, we have parking spaces, and we're basically restriping from here over. The library currently has the old-style barrier-free space, 12 foot wide. We're going to restripe into a current dimension, and that's going to allow us to let this last space be about 10, and I forget the dimension, we have a dimension on the drawings, but 10 feet plus. That's going to really serve as the delivery space. We do get deliveries once a day to the library, books coming in and coming out that are shared amongst other libraries. And so that will be, that will be the main location where that comes, will come in and out of the library.
So mainly, like, it would be signed, so otherwise it would be kind of open, so people could walk back and forth?
Yes.
But maybe just delivery vehicles only, or something like that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
The, I don't know, Stacy, do we have a regular time and day when the cooperative brings the books, or is it varies?
Five weekdays, and usually between 11, 10, and 12.
Okay. So it's during, it's during normal library hours, so to ensure that space is available for them, so they can kind of get in and get out.
Got it.
We'll probably sign that, so it is kind of a, more of a delivery zone.
Okay.
Any other questions on sidewalk? Okay. Next up, lighting. I guess we are going to make a determination here in regards to lighting requirements. Kim, could you help us out?
Yes, the lighting does not entirely meet to the ordinance, and it is just simply requested that the planning commission determine that, considering that there aren't any changes proposed, that the lighting on-site is sufficient. We have asked that the applicant note the site lighting on the site plan as well.
The existing lighting?
Yes.
Comments?
Don't see a problem.
Okay. We're fine. Moving around, next page, we're on page seven. DPW letter, we'll get there real quick. Architectural building materials, meeting all the requirements, yes. It says, "Overall, the staff's view that the architect has done an excellent job in designing an addition that complements both the original 1927 building and the 1980 addition." Any comments?
I would agree. I like that glass back area, and I think it's going to be really nice, and it's going to offer some people some nice views, I think, so, well done.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it looks very nice.
I have a question on a wall that you indicate on your site plan. It looks like you're also proposing an 18-foot-long wall. It's, do you know what I'm talking about? So it'd be on your site plan, it's like, kind of in that utility area that you mentioned.
Yeah, we have a low, we've added a low retaining wall just to make some of the grades work. Part of the, part of the intent of, one, we have, this is a fire exit, and currently it dumps out, and there's no sidewalk, so it really doesn't meet current code to get us to a public way. And so we're adding that sidewalk, but also we're doing it in such a way so that is essentially a sloping sidewalk, so it serves as a barrier-free access to the library. You may know that the library does a great deal of summer outdoor programming, and there's South Lawn, concerts, and those sorts of things. And right now, apart from PortaJohn, we don't have access to toilets from a barrier-free standpoint. And so this will provide people a path from the south side of the building into the building so they could access the facilities. And so in order to make those grades work, we added a small little retaining wall to make that work. And we haven't identified that material, that may be where you're going.
I was trying to understand what it was, if it was tall, you know, or what it was.
It's just for a few, just really just to make the, a few feet of grade work there. There's currently a retaining wall there now, which is like railroad timbers, and we'll do something a little nicer than that.
Okay.
Okay. I've moved over to page eight. Heartland Township DPW review. He is approving it. Apparently there are enough sewer REUs. The planned expansion is contingent upon Livingston County Drain Commission approval and Fire Marshal approval as well, and we do have a letter from the Fire Marshal here this evening, and he's in the audience. And we'll get him in a second here. We'll just move down to the next. Heartland Township Engineer review. Review also notes that detention ponds with side slopes deeper than one vertical to five horizontal require fencing. I don't think that's an issue for you. Is that?
Well, it is, it is an issue from the fact that our slopes exceed the one to five, and so what we will do is with our engineers, we'll work directly with HRC and make sure that, that we, none of us want to put in a fence, and so we'll work to see if we can adjust the grades and satisfy their concerns, address it in that way.
Okay. Dear Phil Fire Authority, review forthcoming. We have it. Kim, did you say that Mike had something he wanted to say tonight? If he does, he has to come forward. He can't sit in the back of the room. They can't hear you at home.
Good evening, everybody. Basically, I'm just here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. We did have a number of challenges when it came to the review, hence the, you know, the original, my review is forthcoming. I ended up having to do, thinking outside of the box a little bit here. A number of the issues here primarily has to do with the grade issues, access to the building, but yet, basically, just dealing with the natural surroundings. But all meanwhile, trying to keep the life safety portion intact and keeping the charm, the history, and overall look, the desired look of not only the applicant, but the township as well, this commission. So we met, and we discussed and figure, we think we figured out a way to handle a lot of the issues. And one of them is actually sprinklers, fire sprinklers, within the building. And obviously, they're in on a budget. They're not hooked up to municipal water. There is not municipal water running past that property. So we're in the process right now of trying to figure So we're in the process right now of trying to figure out a way to meet the fire flow requirements necessary to keep the building safe and keep the occupants safe, which will significantly help out with the construction of the building. The way the building's laid out, ingress, egress, things of that nature. So because we're doing a little, a few of the things outside of the norm, outside of the usual way of doing things here in Heartland, that's why I'm here this evening, was just in the event that anybody had any questions or any concerns that I could help address with that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mike? Comments?
So it's going to be a dry system, I assume?
No. It won't be a dry system. It will be, to my knowledge, it will be a wet system. The biggest challenge right now that we're having with the building is the water, the initial water. Yeah, because they have a four-inch well. And the question here is, will that well supply the required pressure at the end of the system? When we look at these systems and when they're designed, we take the furthest, highest sprinkler head away from the riser or the point of service, if you will, because that's the most demanding. And that's what we're working, because we're dealing with some height issues, roughly 30 feet, and you take that, just the head pressure alone, and we're dealing with 13, we're losing 13 PSI right off the bat. So we're just, we're just working with them and seeing if there's a way that we can get around with this, with the four-inch well. Okay?
So it looks like you got a couple of conditions here, but you're okay with it?
Yeah, really, for the most part, I'm very good with the project. Nothing really jumped out. I mean, mostly was the access, getting around the building. Normally, within a commercial building, we have access requirements around the building. And because of that east side, that poses a challenge, plus with the south lawn not creating any additional parking. And the real, the biggest thing is, not so much the lawn, but it's the time of year. I mean, in the springtime, we don't want to be burying fire trucks and things like that. So suppression is definitely going to be a friend to the community in that aspect, in this project.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike?
Yep.
Everybody good?
Is the applicant okay with these conditions?
I assume you've read his letter?
Indeed, we have. And we have our construction manager working with a local suppression contractor, trying to do that evaluation. And we're sort of in the process of seeing what the well, the existing well, can do. And right now, I guess we're being optimistic. And if it proves that we can't seem to do what we want to do, then Mike and I'll go back and roll up our sleeves, and we'll figure out Plan B. But we're pretty confident. And there is currently a number of sprinkle heads within the existing building from the 1980 renovation and expansion. So we are partially suppressed. But this will bring suppression throughout the entire building, which is sort of drastically increasing the level of life safety within the building, which is a real plus. And then we just have to make sure that we have the flow to make it work, so.
And there are a number of options that are available, so hopefully we can get something worked out.
Okay.
Great.
Great. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, we've reached the end of the staff review letter. Are there any further questions, comments on this project? Now, there is a recommended motion on the top of page nine.
Move to approve site plan amendment, application number 536 for the Crumaine District Library reconfiguration, subject to the following conditions. One, sight lighting is properly shown on the plan. Two, a note is added indicating that the landscape materials are in compliance with the applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance. Three, the type of mulch proposed is identified. Four, all issues raised by the Township DPW Director, Township Engineer, and Fire Marshal in their respective review letters are addressed.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve site plan, the site plan from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Newsom. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, we are on item nine, a little housekeeping here that we do at the planning commission every year. That would be the 2016 Annual Planning Commission Organizational Meeting. First up, item A is the review of our planning commission bylaws. I do not believe there are any proposed changes from the previous document. Our bylaws suggest that we reaffirm them every year. So if you're comfortable, we're good.
I move to reaffirm the Heartland Township Planning Commission bylaws as written, amending them only for the purpose of referencing January 14th, 2016, as the most recent date of review.
Second that. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Kalini, second from Commissioner Voight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carries. Next up is our 2016 Planning Commission election of officers. Anyone want to jump in there?
I move to retain the current officers as the previous, if they all should accept the positions.
Support?
Any discussion? We all three draw the short straw.
You got it.
All right. Motion from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Murphy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no motion carries. Item C, we have a couple committees on the planning commission. And I am going to reappoint Keith Voight and myself to the Site Plan Review Committee and retain Murphy, Grissom, and Voight on the Ordinance Review Committee for 2016. I know I didn't ask any of you. You have no choice. All right. I don't think we need a vote on that, do we? I don't think we need a vote on that one. So just, we'll mark it in the minutes there. Thank you all. So item 10, call of the public. Anyone have anything to add? Come on forward. Either one, your choice. They're both blind.
Cecilia Ann Marlowe, I am the Crumaine District Library Director, but I am also a resident of Heartland Township, 11893 Maxfield Boulevard. Thank you. I'm deeply grateful for your thoughtful review, for your consistent response, and for enabling us to meet the needs of this community that they have expressed for some time, as frugally as it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Planners Report, item 11. Kim, do you have anything for us tonight?
Just a few updates here. First of all, Speedway, the fuel and convenience station at US 23 and M59, the construction plans have been submitted, and those are under review now. Woods Edge Site Condominium is wrapping up, and they're requesting final inspections, so we should be seeing some definite activity out there. The Mug &amp; Bops Fuel and Convenience Station, those construction plans are in for review as well. Newberry Place, the plans are under review by McKenna and Associates, and it is expected that a letter will go out on that shortly, and we'll continue to work with the applicant on that project. Walnut Ridge Estates, the 64 site condominiums behind the Venture Church, north of Venture Church, that final PD and site plan have been submitted for consideration, and it will be scheduled for the 28th, as a consideration of the last step for the planning commission at that time. And also, just a reminder about the meet and greet for Troy Langer, our new planning director, and that is scheduled for Monday at 9:00, and we hope that you can all be there. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Committee reports, comments, anyone, anything? Seeing none, if we could have a motion to adjourn, please.
It's a whole move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carries. Thanks. You're all dismissed.